We're live now. Okay, good afternoon. This is the public defender board of trustees regular meeting for Tuesday, December thirty first. Twelve thirty, I'd like to have the secretary called, uh, roll call to see if you have a call.
Yes, your honor, uh. First member will be, uh, the chairman, Honorable Robert J. George.
Please excuse.
Excuse absolutely. Vice Chairman, Honorable Alberto C. Lemeran of the third.
Present.
Uh, member attorney Jacqueline, uh, Terlaki, Mommar. And then. Uh, member, Mrs. Donam R. Munia Kanata.
I'm present here in East Agania in my office.
And, uh, lastly, uh, member, uh, Cristiano, yes, Whitman?
Present.
Okay, we've just, we're first present for now. I'm gonna approve of due notice of meeting, uh, it's been notified, public has been notified. So to the statute. Uh, is there any motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes?
By, uh.
Subject to correction?
Okay, motion made by, um. And this Donna Kanata, seconded by Christina. Whitman, any objections? There being no objections, it's approved. Okay, we'll go down to the old business. The financial status update.
Thank you, your honor. For fiscal year, P D S, uh, fiscal year twenty five. P D S received its November and December allotments for a total of. One million three hundred sixty seven, seven hundred seventy six. The breakdown is as followed. P D S C received one, one million eighty six. The eighty six thousand seventy two. And A P D at two hundred eighty one, seven hundred four. P D S C is operating at ninety percent, whereas, uh, A P D is at ninety one. Regarding the allotments for C L C. P D S C has received three releases. For C L C totaling one hundred sixty one. Thousand three hundred eighty as of today. However, before utilizing these releases, the funds from the ARPA fund. Will be used until it is exhausted by this fiscal year. Going on to I C J R and stop funds. For I P J R, P D S C is, has issued invoices for September at. Six thousand four hundred two. October at nine thousand three hundred eighty. And November at eight thousand one dollars, totaling twenty three thousand seven hundred eighty four. And for stop, P D S C has issued invoices. For October at eleven thousand four hundred thirty eight. And November at nine hundred four seventy seven. Totaling twelve thousand three hundred forty three. And as of today, have not received payment for the allot two programs. Now moving on to E J C, the, uh, Elder Justice Center. P D S C has not received payments for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Which totals to eighty five thousand eight hundred sixty four. We are following up with D P H S S as to when payments will begin. A release of claim was submitted this month fully above stating the balance due from this contract. In addition, fiscal has issued invoices to D P H S S. For October and November and eighteen thousand nine hundred forty each for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Payment has not been received by P D S C. Thank you, bro. That's all for the fiscal report.
Any, uh, questions on the financial status report? There, there being none, we will go now from to the executive attorney, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have our stats up there. Basically, we have one thousand nine hundred ninety two, uh, pre-judgment cases, including. Bench warrants and then. We have probably another thirty two hundred post judgment. Cases including. Oh, nine hundred thirty three bench warrant, so. And if you look at the comparison with prior years, we opened seventy cases in November. This year, last year. We had opened a hundred thirty four. Compared to that ninety eighty nine seventy. So it's, uh, we're tracking a little lower than prior years and part of this might be, um. I'm not sure when we moved all our civil stuff over to C L C, but those numbers are not reflected. So like in twenty twenty. While we. Open eighty nine cases. And some of those might have been civil cases in twenty twenty four, these are seventy. Uh, adult criminal and juvenile cases. And, uh, the next page over, we have stats, um. Basically by. Court room. And so it loo- looks like we have about a thousand eight hundred sixty nine, um. Clients just showing their. Pre-trial case status that are re-. Whether they're released on recognizance, yeah. Showing thirty two and, uh. About three hundred forty that are detained. So it's, you know, we're finally able to. Track these stats a little more accurately. Like the next page really just starts stats on our electronic monitoring. Um. I think it was, or, uh, acting Evan and Chicken Glass here put this together. You want to expand that?
Sure, uh, with the, uh, the time monitoring stats is just for this. From January to present, uh, date as of, uh, November sixteen. Uh. Maybe that should have been December sixteen, but, uh. It should be December sixteen, so basically. So basically, uh, we applied for, uh, ninety two applications, uh. And, uh. Twenty seven of them have been eligible, uh, forty have been ineligible. By the Russian office and then twenty five were still pending evaluation. Uh, and then you have a total of thirty three that are granted release, uh, so one, one higher than other stat for this. And the fourteen were denied on revolts. So it's a little.
What did those have on?
These are all public defender, uh.
Okay, you figured out?
Yes, this is just our staff for our office.
They gave me one revoked, so hopefully over time we'll be able to track. How, um. Is successful, they are on, uh. You know, the kind of one, and they seem to be a lot more successful than just who are released.
And most of them are pre-trial.
Yeah, these are all pre-trial.
These are ones that are not pre-trial usually are. Where they then use that as a sanction.
Yes.
Any questions of, uh, Mr. Dory's report, uh? Board members?
The only thing I really want to add is the, the bus pass law, so.
Yes.
That's an incredible piece of. The, the court apparently receives a hundred, uh. passes, so we're, we're meeting with, uh.
Month?
Uh, actually, I think they had a hundred at a time and then if they're already short. They request additional and then they'll within five days or scores of it and. shipment, so there doesn't appear to be a cap. So we're gonna be with G R T sometime next week or the week after to figure out how we can, um. Help streamline that process.
Okay, can you explain to the, uh, board members? How that process works? So, because I don't think they, it was ever explained.
Yeah, so right now there's a, a public laws passed. Uh, two months ago that, uh, is allowing, uh, buzz passes to individuals who. Are in need of it to obtain public services. And so they identified. Maybe five key agencies, including the judiciary, Guam. Uh, Department of Public Health Human Services. G G O E and, uh. That's a. The other one, maybe Guam Behavioral. Well, and, and so the, our clients can go there, they're supposedly gonna get three buzz passes. When they need to make a ten court hearings or apply for, uh, SNAP benefits. Uh, but the program really was implemented without any funding, so G R T is now trying to figure out, uh. To, yeah, pay forward and also to. Uh, develop guidelines, because I mean the stats or guidelines are like, as long as you say you need. A buzz pass, you're supposed to be able to get one, but obviously that there's no income guidelines or anything like that, that was set. Uh, statutorily, so we're, you know, we're meeting with them in a couple of weeks to try to help them iron out. The details on how we can help our clients.
Using allowance for monthly tasks, because they just haven't developed that aspect of.
Yeah, it's like daily or weekly.
So now, uh, the buzz pass is basically for one.
That, that's what right now they're only.
Because it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, she need to. Get to the bus, you know, the agency to get a buzz pass, so. We're hoping that like right now probation has a hundred and they're trying to work out. The details, I know they also have some of the specialty courts, so. They might have a better idea of how to implement it, because specialty courts have been doing it for a while. So we'll, we'll meet with them about that. But I know that we have something set up with Roxanne. I think January sixth or. It's the week of January sixth, or next week, right? But it sounds, I mean, it sounds very promising, but really it could get overwhelmed and. We'll just try to.
Yeah, I think we should have a very effective question. You know, anybody who requests a buzz pass, they don't have. So I, I'll have to talk with probation. Okay, uh, now, any from the board members, any questions on the buzz pass? Uh. Graham? Could there be none, um? Alter public defender, is anybody?
Myself and Miss Hattori is here, your honor.
Okay, any?
Yes, your honor, similar to, um. P D or P D S C, we have a downward trend. We seem to be matching our, uh. Twenty twenty two case numbers. But, um, we're managing with our. Number, numbers of attorneys, we're very busy. As you can see in, in the stats. Um, as compared to, uh. Previous years. We're, uh. Pretty busy, so. Ms. Hattori, did you?
Yes, okay, so, um. I have to apologize for A P D's short report, we had. Case management issues for a couple of weeks and we are now making changes to our server. So at the next meeting, we'll provide a final calendar year twenty four report. And a first quarter and report for fiscal year twenty five. But for November, we picked up thirty two cases, we are now at four hundred and seventy one for the calendar year twenty four. We have seventy six cases for the fiscal year twenty five. Are pre-trials up to six hundred and thirteen. And are there any questions?
Any questions from the board members? Okay, you know, I, I request that, you know, um, if the. Public defendant A P D can get a tally of how many of your clients are, are.
Yes, sir.
Yes. We're working with probation. Because I'd like to know which, if they're. If they're doing it on the need basis, I just don't want these buzz passes. Given out to anybody who, who asked for it. I think there should be a need because, uh. There's a, quite a few of our people, the defendants do have, uh. Transportation. But we try to accommodate those who really need it, so maybe if you can provide a census of who's, uh. Who are your clients that are receiving buzz pass? So we can identify them with probation, okay? Neil Trump.
Okay.
Um, if I may, on, on page nineteen, right after the A P D stats, there is a resolution, uh. Uh, prepared for Miss, uh, managing attorney, uh, Yale's. Performance evaluation that was completed in the previous board meeting on November twenty sixth. So basically, we're wondering if, uh, you can sign for Justice Torres on his behalf as he's absent today?
Well, he's asked that that be, since it's not part of the agenda. You, you know, for some reason it was left out.
Do you want me to?
And you know, when there was issue in the courts. Where overacted. Matter that was a part of the agenda. Court ruled that it had to be in the agenda. And since her. Resolution is not part of the agenda. Because we, I talked to the C J on that yesterday. So we have to comply with the law, so what I can, I, I'm gonna make a motion, there's no objections. That we place that resolution in the next four.
Sure.
Day. So make sure we don't miss it, okay?
Yeah.
But, you know, I don't, you know, I don't think there's any objections. To the resolution, it's just that it wasn't. Published as part of the agenda for this. The executive director for the P D is there, but not for the. For A P D. Okay. So we can't act on it until it's part of the agenda, although it's part of the.
Packet.
Packet, it's not in the agenda. So we have to make sure we don't buy it or. Okay, so, uh, I think the C L C who's, uh, doing the report for the, uh. Civil law center.
Yes, your honor, hi.
Carol?
Yes, hi, your honor. Um, so our. Our fiscal stats were, uh, submitted for the year in our September board meeting, so the stats that we provided in this one. It's just our current stats, um, with the start of this fiscal year, which is October, November. But if you're to compare our sta- uh, statistics to our. Twenty twenty three, um, fiscal year statistics, you're gonna see that there's a significant increase in the amount of caseload that we've, um. We had, um, the example would be if we look at Elder Justice Center, um, just for the month of. October, November, we have ninety three cases, whereas, uh, twenty twenty three, those three months, we had a total of ninety seven. So if we include December, we're gonna be well over the hundred marker. Um, that applies to all the services, uh, across the board, um, in this. In this statistics and the next one that's provided. Under TAC, so we continue to provide, um, those services to the community. We, we're also still conducting the needs assessment and I'll be submitting a full report on that as well, uh, compiling all the data and just, um, analyzing it. So that I could give the, the board a report as to, um. What was, what's found off the needs assessment, um, and areas that we're gonna be looking at. Um, areas that we're currently working on, uh, we've, uh, we started our outreach, community-based outreaches into the senior centers. So Basil Malin is the attorney that's been handling our E, our, our elder justice. So he's been pretty busy out in the communities, um, conducting educational outreach and, um, advising of the types of services our office has. Uh, we're also, we just signed an M O U with the University of Guam. The social work program, as well as the criminal justice program, we're gonna be. Looking at, um, engaging in, uh, programs with the, with the soon-to-be graduates in social work as well as criminal justice. That will include, um. Assistance in like court-appointed guardian alitem cases as well, um, working with us on that, so we could build a pro- a CASA program and then also. Working with the criminal justice, um. And paralegal programs to develop a senior, uh, legal clinic with them, so that's what we're doing right now, um. And I know, um, Jackie and I are gonna be meeting shortly and looking at other types of. Programs that we could be able to offer. Uh, we're also trying to revamp our, uh, pro-state litigation form banks as well.
Carol, any, uh, questions? Okay, thank you, uh, Carol, Steve and Pete for your reports. Now we're going to the executive director compensation, entitlement, pay plan, we have a copy of the resolution, right? I think we have a copy of that. So. Everybody has a copy of the proposed resolution, correct? Donna, Christina?
Your president? So nobody's saying? I'm gonna review the board, um. Last time, I, I think there may have been. The board members needed to discuss and vote on how they were to address these issues, um. What. Pay plan is gonna be on moving forward and what. Um. How many steps he was gonna advance and that sort of thing, so it didn't look like a resolution was requested until after that issue settled out.
What the resolution of the number around?
And that was requested, um, just. Historically, what's been done, and I, I think the. Herman is gonna talk to Barbara Dean Harris as well, I'm gonna see it.
Sorry, moving to, asking that, you think?
I'm, I'm not asking anything, it's, uh, it's my boss, it's, uh. But that, that's what.
But I heard. And, uh. This was, uh. Ding ding, ask me to do this. Uh, to propose to move the, uh, administrative, the director of the executive pay plan. The, uh, attorney pay man, okay? So that in essence, that would be, um, effective from. January first of this year to December thirty first. And that would put him from to, uh, thirty five. Step ten and salary of fifty five, seven eighty eight. Objections to that, um, anybody?
Um, if I may, um, Mr. Chair?
Okay, yeah. Attorney July?
My understanding is that in reviewing the documentation, um, that we have been provided, that. Um, we are not moving Mr. Hattori out of the executive pay plan. That he still will be maintained at the executive pay plan. Um, but for purposes of the calculation of that pay plan, I think we are utilizing the numbers. Um, on the attorney pay scale, is that correct?
Well, the proposal now by the C J is to move him to the attorney pay plan. Be consistent with the. The salary adjustments and take him out from the executive pay plan. From the executive department. But the salary would be almost the same, in fact, he'd be getting a little bit more. Right now, it, it, he will be in the executive pay plan, he'll be getting one sixty eight, four seventy five. In the attorney pay plan, he'll be getting one sixty five, seven eighty eight, uh.
Would that be?
Thought it was better to transfer it to the attorney pay plan. To be consistent with the other attorneys, in case he was, um. He did, he wanted to fall back, he would be still with the attorney pay plan. Instead of readjusting everything to, uh. From executive to attorney pay plan. You understand what I'm saying? So the recommendation was to put everything with the attorney pay plan. So that to be consistent with, uh. The pay. Is probably gonna be very similar, as I said, it was just a few hundred dollar difference. Which benefits Steve more if we transfer it to the attorney pay plan. And by, you know, a couple of hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And then. To fall back, he can still be on the attorney pay plan with us adjusting. The adjustments.
No, I, my, my such, my issue is simply to be clear on our record. That we are not moving him into a classified position, he will remain unclassified.
Yeah, that's right, he will remain unclassified.
And for purposes of calculating his executive director pay, we are utilizing the attorney pay plan. Uh, also because of the fact that, uh, Mr. Hattori also co- um, covers. A specific caseload, so whether we look at the attorney pay plan or the executive play, pay plan. He fits, uh, both categories, I don't think there's any dispute there. Um, so I mean, for purposes, Mr. Chair, at this point, I, I would be. Uh, willing to make a motion that we modify his pay. Effective January first, twenty twenty five. To reflect that attorney pay plan. Um, on a specific statement that we are not modifying his classified position. And he remains as executive director, um, and there will be no retroactive, uh, pay as well.
Correct, um, so.
Does that have to be seconded?
Attorney July. Okay, basically. We are moving him from the executive pay plan to the attorney pay plan to be consistent. And he will be getting step ten. We have twenty five, step ten. Which is one hundred sixty five thousand seven eighty eight. Which is probably a slightly more than in the executive pay plan. But he will remain still unclassified. The only thing that if, um, if, um, attorney. Uh, Hattori wishes to go back to being a sedentary attorney. It's, it's a lot easier for him to fall back on the attorney pay plan. Instead of us making adjustments. Okay, but he will still be. Um, unclassified. Is that your understanding, Steve?
Oh, yes.
He's getting slightly more because he's, he's unclassified. But for the sake of, of clarity, for him, because he, if he wants to go back. Being a full-time attorney. He'd be, be just backtrack on the attorney pay plan, we don't have to make any adjustments. So anybody, uh, seconding, uh, um, Attorney July's, uh, motion?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded that the, the transfer, the executive pay plan. To the attorney pay plan, attorney five, step ten. Uh, with the condition that he still remains unclassified. Okay? Yeah, and, uh, on that motion, everybody, anybody of, uh, board, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody votes? Okay, it's unanimous that, um, we approve the attorney five, step ten. One sixty five, seventy eight, moving it from the executive play plan. To the attorney pay plan. And, uh, Steve will still remain unclassified.
And without retroactive pay, um, Mr. Chair?
Without retract. Without retracting pay, right? Okay, we're down now to, and then on the, uh, Ms. Gail's pay plan. It was not included in the agenda, so we can't act on it. So we, I've asked Robbie to go to the next meeting, yeah? On, on the Sixth Amendment Center, who's, uh, reporting on that?
Uh, you, you know, we can just deal with that, I don't, I mean, just to update, we're working with judiciary and, uh. I guess, uh, Jerry, although we've been meeting and we're trying to together the final version so we can circulate it. And so we have, we'll have something in January.
Okay, and then the next one is civil moratorium, we have the final resolution. Which was given to all the members, um. Any objections, anybody making a motion to advance the. Resolution, the civil moratorium?
Your honor, if I may, it was actually passed in the November or October meeting, your honor, with the corrections that were made, so it's just, it's ready for signature.
That's why we're passing with it for as amended, okay?
Okay.
As amended, because we didn't. Okay, so is there a motion?
Motioned.
Okay, by Ms. Kanata, any second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Whitman. Okay, um, all those in favor, say aye?
If, Mr. Chair, if we may have a brief discussion on that section that has not been modified.
Check to that, uh, attorney, provide?
Um, I apologize, but I'm looking if you can go back down to the bottom before the signature.
The last resolve?
Yes, the last resolved. Um, the Civil Law Center, my recollection from the meeting minutes was that the Civil Law Center was required to submit. Its community-based assessment survey to the Board of Trustees for determination on the priority legal services. That does not look like it's been modified since.
I put the last sentence, any determination of the types of legal services made after review, the needs shall be provided to the board for further discussion. That's the last sentence on that resolve.
Yeah, I, I don't think.
Attorney July?
Yeah, I don't think that that's consistent with our previous vote. Which is that the board is to determine the priority legal services, not that it would discuss. The legal services priority. I just wanna make sure that this is consistent with our prior meeting minutes, since we've already taken a vote. The issue was just a matter of signing the document, but that language is not consistent.
How do you want to amend that last sentence, Jackie?
Uh, I, I would probably say that the Civil Law Center shall submit. Its needs assessment. On priority legal services. For determination. By the Board of Trustees.
Can you say that one more time? Legal needs assessment to the board.
Of its priority legal services. For determination by the Board of Trustees.
Okay.
I think that makes it a little clearer.
Okay, any objections to that amendment, uh, from any board members? Okay, there are no objections to the amendment passes. Okay, on the overall, uh, resolutions, uh, would be amendment made by, uh, Attorney July? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, and it's unanimous, it lead passed. So through that amendment. Okay, we're now in new business, um. Donated leave policy, I think that was discussed in the last meeting.
Yes, your honor, uh, so basically, uh, the. We just, we had discussed the policy and, um. The only thing that was, uh, required, even, and the last meeting was. They kind of, uh. Turned down or cleaned up the, uh, resolution, which is on page thirty six. Uh, and there was an issue of, uh, the language containing the judicial council being in there, so that was taken off. Uh. So in general, the, the last board meeting, the, the board had agreed with the. The idea of the, the donated leave bank policy. the idea of the, the donated leave bank policy, uh, the way it was written, as far as the policy is written, but there was an issue with the way the, uh, resolution was, uh, was, uh, tailored, and so there have been changes to that.
Yeah, I, I know that, uh, I, I ask that to be approved by the executive director and the managing attorney.
Yes.
Um, you, you're putting slash administrator director. And we just have one person in control of that, uh, who should be just the executive director, Steve.
That could be fine, there. Change.
Yeah. So the executive director and then or the managing attorney for APD shall process the press and afford, and afford your ability. It was agreement. Because if you have two heads approving this thing, it'd be very confusing. Ronnie? I think one person should be just have their phone. And I think it's, uh, Steve that should be able. Okay, with that amendment, uh, any objections, uh, is there a motion to pass this resolution? Motion by the members?
Motion.
Okay, uh, this can active, uh, makes a motion to approve the resolution, any second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. July, Attorney July, uh, second, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous, the motion passes. Okay, the next one is the above step recruitment and the administrative director, I think we discussed this also in the last meeting, right, Robbie?
I think it was proposed for, uh,
For discussion.
For discussion, but it hasn't been discussed.
Okay, so what we do for discussion purposes? Can you explain the, that, uh, uh, resolution?
Oh, I can explain that. So the, the committee goes to select myself, the deputy director, um, the managing attorney for APD, the managing attorney for CLC, and we interviewed six individuals. Uh, we actually received a lot of very qualified individuals. We decided to select Shane Gotta or not. I'll, I'll figure out his pronunciation, but anyways. But this guy has.
No, it's the end silent, it's Gotta. His father worked with me forever.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And so, and silent, that's psychology.
So he's been a, uh, he was the, uh, personnel service administrator for DOA, which is he, he provides, uh, HR support for the entire executive branch. So he's highly qualified and, uh, we're seeking above step recruitment due to his exceptional, you know, qualifications. I think, you know, this board really has a lot of, of power over, uh, with our base, our personnel roles, our base skills, our classifications, and I think having someone like Mr. Natta to help the board and also, you know, myself, John Morrison and, um, the managing attorneys of run the office, uh, will be really beneficial. And, you know, the position of, of the script directors, really, uh, it's quite encompassing, right, they have to be experts at HR, experts at fiscal, experts at procurement. And so, uh, Shane, you know, has worked in each of those areas as his resume indicates it. Um, you know, we're budgeted for, um, an S nine according to the twenty twenty-five um, budget request, so we're really only asking to, for additional uh, for an S ten position, which is probably like four thousand more than a S nine.
Yes, yeah, it's, um, it's in the resolution.
But, yes.
Yeah, it's one hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-three.
And, you know, that'll help us be competitive in filling this position.
This background, he, um, had a break in his governmental service, he was at DOA for nineteen years or so, and then, you know, his wife off island, went home, home. Um, so, I think she's in the military, any from home state?
So was he, uh? The house husband?
Flying to the job here, um, luckily.
Yeah, he, I mean, his last pay at DOA was like a hundred.
He always stays. What, fell, was he doing something?
I don't, I don't, I don't agree.
I think he sold it, it was only like six months.
There was like a whole house husband. Yeah, the only, uh, only part about the pay plan is that, uh, when we passed the budget, it was approved for one hundred twelve thousand, three eighty-eight. So I like to amend the, uh, resolution that the public defender use any lapse funds to pay the difference, so it's created. Any objections on that, uh, from the members?
No objection.
No objection.
Okay, there is no objections, then, got the resolution itself, um, a step up recruitment to S ten and authorizing the public defender to use any lapse funds available in their budget make up the difference from the budgeted, uh, amount. On that amendment, um, any, uh, all those in favor say aye? Do we, uh?
Aye.
Do we have a motion first to, uh, approve the resolution, Donna, you want?
I, I, I motion it.
Okay, Donna makes a motion, any seconds?
I second.
Okay, uh, Christina Whitman, uh, second, okay, all, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
In, uh, is he unanimous? Okay, the last thing on the agenda is a step, above step recruitment for attorney four. Can explain that, Steve?
Well, I can explain it briefly, it's really not an above step recruiting, it's more like giving him as a lateral hire, he moved over from the Attorney General's office and is providing legal services to the CLC, and so we just want to pay him the same step he was at the Attorney General's office. Uh, at the time that he came over, there wasn't local funding, and so now that we, we do have local funding, well, he's been through the competitive process, so we'd like to offer him what he would have made, uh, at the AG's when he left. So he's actually lost this step because, uh, he missed an anniversary date, but uh, if we're allowed to just hire him at what his last qualified qualified attorney level was, then, at least going forward, he he can get an equal.
So it was level four, step four at the attorney?
Yeah, four, step nine, that's.
So we're just making it comparable.
Yeah, sure.
Any questions of Steve on the, uh, about on this resolution?
Um, I've got a question, um, so why are we characterizing this, um, as a above step recruitment? He's a current employee already, correct?
That, that's correct, but he's, uh, as an LTA because, uh, he's being grant funded by grants.
Okay, so he's on LTA status at this time.
Oh, by the grant, which grant?
Uh, I think various grants, right, Carol, could you, uh?
He's under EJAC and, um, he also bills under our tax advocacy grant. So he's, uh, he's like fifty fifty on both of the grants.
The grant pays, uh, half of the pay.
Well, still, so your honor, we'll still bill, we will still bill the grant, we're able to still bill on the grants, um, but that's the pay, so when we pick him up and in a classified, we just wanna give him the position he was at while he was at the AG's office. Um, and that's the position, as, as Steve mentioned, he took a, there, there, of course, he loses one of the, uh, one of his annual increments, because he's been here already for like a year, and so, um, what, what can you do, the bill, all of us who's under each of those respective grants, we'll continue to bill the grants. And ensure that we utilize that, that funding as well.
Ooh, I think this you had.
Does that answer your question, Attorney July?
Uh, the fact that he's LTA and we're slotting him into a full position is uh, my understanding now, this is why we're utilizing the above step recruitment, thank you.
And more questions on Steve on the, this resolution? Okay, can I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Okay, uh, our motion by, uh, Ms. Whitman, any second?
Second, second.
Okay, be seconded by, uh, Ms. Canata, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous? Okay, we're down to public discussion, anybody there from the public?
Mr. Chairman, just for purposes of that motion, um, because I share the same last.
What is motion now?
Um, just on the last motion for the above step recruitment, um, I just wanted to make clear for the record, uh, because I share the same last name as Mr. Turahi. So I wanna ensure that there's no concerns, uh, I'm not directly related to Mr. Turahi. I am met, I am Turahi by marriage, um, and I am unsure about his, uh, relationship to my husband, some distant relative is my understanding.
Okay, so, uh, Attorney July is filing, is to make a disclaimer, but just no conflict.
Exactly.
There's somebody for public discussion, we will meet again on the January twenty-eighth. I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year.
Happy new year.
Bye, thank you.
All right, adios.